Welcome Rosemount, I'd like to call the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, May 7th, 2024 to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Mayor, just one correction tonight, at the request of the applicant, item 6E, as an Edward, will be moved to a public hearing. So that's an updated agenda council received midday today, and just wanted to publicly announce it here at this moment.
Okay, so the consent agenda will be items A through M now, with that one removed. Moved the approval of the agenda without a correction, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. First item up is presentations, proclamations, and acknowledgements. The first one is to recognize the Public Service Week. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Yes, as council is aware, this week here, May 5th through the 11th, is Public Service Week in the United States, and so we're asking the city council to acknowledge that here today. As you read in the council memo, and then council had a chance today to participate in a luncheon for city staff, and we really appreciate their support and attendance at that. Just gives us a chance each year to just kind of pause and reflect on really the wonderful city staff that we have, that make this city tick on a day-to-day basis, that do things that we don't always pay attention to, not only, of course, police and fire that maybe we're a bit more aware of, but you know, we're out sweeping streets right now, and we're out flushing hydrants, and things like that that maybe aren't as glamorous that you always see that are really critical to what the city does. And so, we're proud of our public servants, we're proud to be public servants, and appreciate the city council taking the time to acknowledge Public Service Week here in this week of May. So if you would, Mayor, please read the proclamation.
Okay, I'll move the proclamation, is there a second?
Second.
All right, the proclamation reads, whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working, whereas public employees take not only their jobs but oaths. Whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, healthcare professionals, and others, risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. Whereas day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity, and whereas without their public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore, I Jeffrey D. Wise and Selmer of Rosemount, Minnesota do hereby proclaim May 5th through 11th, 2024, as Public Service Recognition Week in the city of Rosemount. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishment and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city, dated this 7th day of May 2024. And with that, roll please.
Essler.
Aye.
Climpel.
Aye.
Weisenstall.
Aye.
Tyson.
Aye.
Fresky.
Aye.
And that completes item 3A with a 5-0 vote. We'll move on to item 3B, the proclamation, recognition for national cities, towns, and villages. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Similar vein here with this action, but a bit of a different flavor. So the city is deeply involved in the National League of Cities. Mayor Weisenstall is a board member on the Board of Directors for the NLC, and so he'll certainly comment here in a moment. But NLC is celebrating its 100th anniversary of being a really critical founding partner in supporting and protecting the needs and the wants and the legislative desires of cities, both locally at the state level and then from a big perspective nationally. And so, they've asked that one of the things that we can do as a member of NLC, and to kind of support them on their 100th anniversary, is to acknowledge the attached proclamation that just really acknowledges, you know, kind of by proxy here, the role of the NLC, but maybe a bit more directly talks about just the power again of cities and towns and small villages, and then what they do in providing the lowest or the most localized level of government on a day-to-day basis. So with that, I'll let you comment more, Mayor, and then read the proclamation.
Okay. The one comment I would make, as I go through here and indicating the 100 years at that initial founding, the League of Minnesota Cities was one of the, I believe, 12 originating organizations behind this. So Minnesota and cities from here have been actively involved for over 100 years. I believe our city has been active in the league, I want to say, since the early to mid 90s. I don't have the exact date, working on trying to determine when that exactly is. But with that, I'll move the proclamation, is there a second?
Second.
And I'll read the motion, the proclamation is follows, whereas the National League of Cities was founded in 1924 in Lawrence, Kansas, as the American Municipal Association by state municipal leagues, seeking more coordination and national representation as cities, towns, and villages expanded rapidly. And whereas the nonpartisan National League of Cities is the oldest and largest organization representing municipal governments throughout the United States, representing the interests of more than 19,000 cities, towns, and villages across the country. And whereas the National League of Cities works in partnerships with 49 state municipal leagues across the country to strengthen local leadership, drive innovation, and influence the federal policies that impact local programs and operations. And whereas the city voices, the city voice of, the voice of cities, towns, and villages in Washington DC, the National League of Cities has successfully championed federal legislation solutions that support municipalities and worked closely with Congress and the executive branch to educate policymakers on the realities of local implementation. And whereas local governments are the bedrock of American democracy, providing 336 million residents with the most accountable, responsive, inclusive, ethical, and transparent government in the world. And whereas from the nation's smallest villages to its largest cities, America's local governments have been essential in transforming the United States of America into the greatest, most influential nation in world history. And whereas Rosemount is proudly served today by a city council and a municipal workforce of many dedicated public servants. Now and therefore, I Jeffrey D. Weisenstall, Mayor of Rosemount, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim thereby proclaim May 2024 as National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month in celebration of America's local governments and the National League of Cities' historic centennial anniversary, the 5th day of May 2024. With that, roll please.
Climpel.
Aye.
Weisenstall.
Aye.
Tyson.
Aye.
Fresky.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
Proclamation passes 5-0. We will move on to 3C, the National Police Week Recognition. Chief Dahlstrom.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Small correction in my memo, it's actually, I had the dates wrong, it's May 12th until the 18th, because it's the calendar week that May 15th falls. So in 1962, President Kennedy declared May 15th as National Peace Officer Memorial Day, and next week, we're honoring it this week, but next week is the actual, the week that we're honoring the law enforcement officers who've been killed in the line of duty. So as we're well aware, on February 18th, it struck close to home here in Dakota County, in the city of Burnsville. I want to again acknowledge council for your guys' support following that event, and to our staff, especially those who were on scene that day, and in our Bearcat, that was again shot 41 times by the suspect that day, and that Bearcat was used, our officers were used to help recover those officers that were killed in the line of duty. So I can tell you that it's a, it's going to be a more difficult week this year, because like I said, it hits close to home. There will be staff down at the St. Paul Peace Officer Memorial on May 14th to 15th, standing guard at our local memorial. And I've been a part of that in the past, it's a pretty special tribute where you get to stand at the Officer Down Memorial. And I know that next year, we're planning to try to get all of Burnsville's staff down to the National Memorial for the dedication to Officer Elmstrand, Officer Ruggie, and Firefighter Finseff. So with that being said, thank you for taking the time to recognize National Police Week for those that lost their lives in the line of duty, and if you'd read the proclamation.
Could you share where the, that statue or memorial is for the Down?
In St. Paul.
In St. Paul, yeah.
It's just in front of the, I guess it would be just south of the Capitol, so the, as the St. Paul Capitol, at the very base of the southern part of the yard is where it is.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Well, I'll move the proclamation, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second, and I'll read the proclamation. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Day, and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for safety and protection of others. And whereas the members of the Rosemount Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens of the city of Rosemount. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property and by protecting all citizens against violence and disorder. And whereas the men and women of the Rosemount Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I Jeffrey D. Weisenstall, Mayor of Rosemount, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim May 12th through the 21st, 2024, as National Police Week within the city of Rosemount, and hereby publicly salute the services of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Throughout the city of Rosemount, we urge and encourage all citizens to take time to appreciate our public safety officers and honor all peace officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty, dated this 5th day of May 2024. With that, roll please.
Weisenstall.
Aye.
Tyson.
Aye.
Fresky.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
Climpel.
Aye.
And that completes item 3C, 5-0 as well, pleading all presentations, proclamations, and acknowledgements. This evening, response to public comment, I understand we do not have any to respond to, and we'll move to public comment. Individuals may wish to address the council on subjects not as part of the immediate meeting agenda. Replies to these concerns will be expressed either through letter, phone, call within a week, or following, at a following council meeting. So the podium is open, please state your name and address and your concern or question. Podium is now open. Anyone? Seeing no one at this time, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting, and that completes item number five. We'll move on to the consent agendas, items 6A through M. Would anyone wish to pull any items for further consideration? The mayor chooses to take 6D for further consideration, any other ones?
6K.
Are there any others?
No.
I'm going to pull 6J for the chief to have an opportunity to give some more information.
Isn't it 6K? That's the one I was pulling.
Yeah, 6, I'm sorry.
Are we looking at?
6J.
So everything would have shifted up?
It should have shifted up, 6J?
The former, yep, the former K.
Yeah.
Sorry, yep, yep, yep.
The former K, the one that's J now.
Yep, yep.
All right, that's good.
That's the one I went pulled.
All right.
We could ask them to talk about a well construction as well.
Yeah. You want to talk about a well construction?
We do have Brian here, we're all.
Talk about the tipwows.
Yeah. All right. Any others? All right, so with 6D and 6J removed, someone like to move the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Essler, second by Climpel, roll please.
Tyson.
Aye.
Fresky.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
Climpel.
Aye.
Weisenstall.
Aye.
Consent agenda is passed 5-0. We will pull 6D up for recognition. Let's see, Ms. Fosbender, I guess you want to speak to that, and I'll deliver the names then.
Yes, absolutely, happy to do so. So, we are looking tonight for the approval for our youth commission to be recognized, and then also approved for the 2024-2025 term. City council had the opportunity to meet with them at a recent meet and greet. We have a total of 18 Rosemount residents who are interested, a couple of them who are looking to be reappointed, but however, I'll let the mayor speak to it as well, but all very eager students, we're excited to hear more about them and see what they're going to bring forward for the next term.
All right, I will list off the 18 young men and women that will be joining us on the youth commission. Some of these are current members signing up for another year, and we have some new members that will be entering 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, so some new members is there. We'll start out with Kenna Amante, Justin Bueller, Kira Favre, Genesis Gure, Anushka, Jacob, Kylie Knutson, Kira Mason, Molly Pittson, Rachel Romando, Isabella Born, Eden Carter, Haley Geller, Cindy Harvey, Bethlehem Cabetti, Sebastian Marchesny, Brianna Metzger, Max Raimonde, and Alex Alexis Sell. And so with that, I'll move the recommended staff for city council to appoint these individuals listed below as the youth commission for 2024-2025. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Weisenstall, second by Fresky, roll please.
Fresky.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
Climpel.
Aye.
Weisenstall.
Aye.
Tyson.
Aye.
That completes 6D, 5-0, we will move to item 6J, the approval of the ICPOET grant agreement.
Yeah, I just wanted to have an opportunity for chief to speak a little bit more about this grant, and then we can decide.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So, no, it's an exciting opportunity for us. The Office of Justice program, specifically through the Department of Public Safety, recognized the critical shortage of peace officers across the state, across our country, and they put out a competitive grant process back in the end of December into January. So we applied for three positions, and thankfully received funding for two of those positions at up to $50,000 per candidate. And so I think before we talk about how that money can be spent, I mean, real quick, it's salary, it's benefits, it's education, tuition expenses, but where the program brings in people that might not have traditionally been in a law enforcement path. So it's any two-year or four-year degree in any field is eligible to come into this program. And a lot of people would shy away from a career transition into law enforcement, or to serve their community because of, let's call it, a school obligation. So traditional law enforcement schooling would be at least two years. Now they've created a program through two institutions, Hennepin Tech and Alex Tech, that it turns a two-year program into a five-month intensive program. So it's drafted to allow people that are established potentially, now their career's looking to make a change, worried about paying a mortgage, potentially they have a family to support, and they wouldn't traditionally be able to get out of that financial obligation or time constraints. So this program actually will pay for the tuition of eligible candidates, it'll pay them a salary, it's different city by city to actually go to school, and you are going to school full-time. It requires our city to make them an employee of our agency, so we worked with our HR department and created a career transition officer position that is benefited. It's within the police department, but it's obviously not a sworn position. You're not sworn until you go through the schooling, graduate, and take your post exam. So those are kind of the highlights. We received the funding, we have one candidate identified that's eligible, and we're going to be putting out some marketing, we're working with our communications team and HR as well to get some materials out in the near future, and depending on how budget talks go with the council and my boss, Mr. Martin, we'll hopefully be putting out for that to fulfill that second grant funding that we received. And again, it'll be going out to anyone with a two-year or four-year degree, any field, just has to be from an accredited educational institute, you can find those online through the post board. And any other questions or things you want me to talk about?
I just wanted to, yeah, just call that out, I'm glad to see these dollars go into a new program, and it sounds like an accelerated program, and an opportunity for somebody maybe in the community to even get in, you know, switch gears and get into law enforcement.
Absolutely, yeah, it's huge for our, for our, for our agency specifically that we got the grant, and statewide, it's going to definitely help with the shortage.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, would you like to move the recommended action?
Yeah, I'd like to recommend the action, is staff to recommending that the city council approve the resolution as attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Tyson, second by Essler, roll please.
Climpel.
Aye.
Weisenstall.
Aye.
Tyson.
Aye.
Fresky.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
That completes 6J, 5-0 vote for approval. That completes item 6, and we'll move on to item 7, public hearings. The first one up this evening is, let's see, the 2024 Street Improvement Project Assessment Hearing. Mr. Erickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, I have a presentation, and I will do my best to keep it brief. And I'm going to skip a few things, so project schedule at this point, as you can see, we're almost done with at least the pre-construction portion of the project schedule. I did have a pre-construction meeting this morning, so the contractor anticipates starting the first week of June, and so we'll be getting notice out to the neighborhood within the next week or so. But this is the assessment hearing portion, and just a couple of highlights on that, it is required by Minnesota Statute 429, so we've done the improvement hearing portion, that was earlier, prior to contract, design, and award. And so, under that portion of the statute, council is required to hear and consider and move on all objections to the proposed assessments. I want to make sure that I note that the property owners are allowed to challenge assessments, they can object to that. Must be either raised at or before the assessment hearing this evening, must be in writing, and it must be signed. At this point, I have not received any objections from any property owners. Again, there's still, through the hearing, they have that opportunity, should anybody decide to do that. If nothing, if the property owner does decide, they can bring that to district court if they want to continue to appeal that. And you'll notice there's a couple of things there, they do have to serve that notice on the mayor, city clerk, within 30 days, and then it has to be filed within 10 days. But it's important to note that they must have objected at or before the assessment hearing, otherwise that will be considered, it won't be considered in district court, excuse me, so. And then there may be options for assessment deferral. So I've had a couple residents request information on deferring their assessments based on their status as either partially disabled or senior citizens, so none of those have come back to me yet, so I can't speak to where those are at. I will, again, just, the council is probably pretty familiar with this at this point, you know, it's determined by our assessment policy, we do that, it's a 35% assessment rate based only on the surface improvements. Any of the utility work is funded via either water, the sanitary sewer, or the storm sewer budgets. Collector roads are calculated just a little bit differently, so that adds to some of the Excel magic that has to be done behind the scenes, and then we do, our calculations are based on a per-unit or per parcel basis, as opposed to front footage. And then any remaining costs are paid for by the city, so that 65% remaining for the surface improvement is paid for by city funds. I do want to mention just a couple of things, so council at the improvement hearing as the project was moving forward, did recommend or did direct that we widen Claret Avenue, at least at Claret Park, and add that parking lane. That portion was bid as a, as an alternate, so we know what the cost for that is, and the assessments do not include that additional cost. It's a benefit to the park, so it's a benefit to the city as a whole, so that was, that was a decision there. The assessment numbers are based on the awarded contract costs. Just as a side note, the contract came in about 16% under the feasibility report number, but the assessments are about 20% below that, so just, just want to make that note. And then there's two types of properties within this, within the corridor, so we had to do a little bit of work on that. I'll, I'll get into that just in a moment, as opposed to trying to explain the words that are on the screen, so. Again, I mentioned the numbers here, so the awarded contract at this point, and this includes a construction contingency of 5%, as well as the overhead, so that's the engineering and observation portions of the project, so it's about just a little over $1.7 million for this project. And then again, the fund sources, as you can see, $960,000 of that is the street CIP, so that's the other portion of the surface cost that is paid for by the city. The assessments are then just under a half a million. And then the water, sewer, and storm utility funds pay for their portion of the utility improvements that are being done on the project. I mentioned the two different types of property, so there's, we did have to do some front-foot calculations, so roughly, a little over 2% of the front footage is attributable to the multifamily area, so we broke the costs out that way, and then took those two assessment numbers and divided by the number of properties within each of those two areas, so. That's where you see the $3,099 per single family and $720 per the townhome, and again, just to note, that is 20% less than what it was at the feasibility report timeframe. And then the, I do want to mention that the interest rate is 2% over that prime rate, so I'm talking with the finance director, that 5.85% is what would be charged for any of the assessments that are certified to the county at the end of the year. Again, I mentioned the two different types of properties, so you can see, the single families are in gray, and then the multifamily units are in blue on the, in the top center, so that's how those assessments break out. And we're all the way to the project contacts, so I think I did okay with keeping brief, and I'll just ask if there are any questions of council at this point.
Doors open to council, any questions, comments?
Nope.
All right, with that, thank you very much, and with that, we will open up the floor for the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on the assessment information may do so, come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and any question or concern, this is also your last opportunity to submit a written, what's the right word for it?
Objection.
Objection, a written objection to the assessment for that process.
We have to move to open the public.
I just did.
You did, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just moved it, come forward.
Sure. Sure.
I live on Chalk Cherry Avenue.
Your name, please.
Jan Schultz.
Okay.
And my question is just on our portion of what we have to pay, and is it, we have until the end of this year to pay it in full, what we, you know, our amount?
Answer it. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will do that. So the assessments are, you have the option to pay the entire thing off this year, and you can do that by the end of October. Statutorily, we're required to give you 30 days, but the way Rosemount does that certification, you have until the end of October to pay the entire amount.
Okay.
If you don't pay the entire amount, it gets certified to the county, and it will show up on your property taxes for 10 years.
Okay, so then it gets spread out, that amount gets spread out for the 10 years. Okay, so then it gets spread out, that amount gets spread out for the 10 years at the interest rate of the six and the?
5.85%.
5.85%.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay. And then, and you can't pay like part of it and then finance the rest?
We don't, we don't do partial payments on assessments.
It's either all of it or?
Or it gets certified.
Or through the county, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come forward?
That wasn't easy, nice question.
Going once. Twice. If there's no one else, I will move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the hearing is now closed. Final actions? We have, let's see, item number two. Anyone like to move the resolution approving the assessment roll?
Sorry, can I just ask a quick question? I didn't catch this before. So in the assessment roll, there's a number on Claret Circle for 720 versus 3,099? Where is that and why is that?
Multifamily.
Those are the multifamily.
Where, where's that on the map? How am I not seeing it on the map?
Yes, so the?
Show the map again.
Oh, yep, I'm sorry. The, the Claret Circle is the?
His monitor's died.
Oh.
Thank you.
Turn your monitor on.
Oh. The Claret Circle is this portion up here, hopefully you can see my cursor.
That isn't coming now, but yeah.
It's, it's the, it's the, the top center of the multifamily area.
Yep, got it. Got it, thank you.
Helps to have them.
Yeah, cause it's not, it's not in the packet, so that's why I wasn't, I wasn't finding it.
There we go, good question. All right, would someone like to move the recommended or adopt the resolution?
Since that's the dumb question, I'll, I'll go ahead and do that. So I'll recommend adopt a resolution approving the assessment roll for the 2024 Street Improvement Project, City Project 2024-01.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Essler, second by Klimpel, roll please.
Weizenzel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Ruski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Klimpel?
Aye.
The resolution is approved, five zero. Complete seven A, we'll move on to seven B. We'll look to Ms. Fosbender to present.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As Logan had mentioned, this previously was on your consent agenda and recently we were notified by Vaha Properties that they would like to make a public comment regarding this matter. So I will go ahead and just provide an overview of the item itself, open a public hearing and then of course, if you have questions as well, I'll be happy to address that in the meantime, too. So a little overview of the request itself, so Vaha Properties was the previous owner of Tops Tavern, as you may know it. They were approved to be the liquor license holder at the establishment located at 14533 Dodd Boulevard from January 1st, 2024 to the end of this year at the November 21st, 2023 regular council meeting, along with all of our other liquor license renewals at that point in time. Per Rosemount City Code, we do require that liquor license maintain liability insurance or other approved proof of financial responsibility. Currently, Vaha Properties does not have a current insurance policy at Tops Tavern. This would constitute a lapse of proof of financial responsibility and would be subject to the immediate suspension of the, their liquor license to, for Vaha Properties. So with that, as I had mentioned, Vaha Properties was notified of the action that was before city council this evening. We notified them 10 days prior to this action taking before you tonight. Vaha Properties legal team had actually notified the city on May 5th, so after our packet was published, requesting to make a public comment regarding this matter. A little bit of a timeline, as I've, we've went over this for a little bit of a period here, so you can see in fall 2023, staff was working with Vaha Properties just in regards to a lot of the questions that they had regarding selling of their business and looking to transfer their liquor license. A lot of that was verbal conversations meeting with staff, just explaining the, the process of overall transferring liquor license. And then November 21st, 2023, Vaha Properties had reached out to staff notifying that there was not gonna be a sale of the business at that point in time and that they were looking to officially renew their license along with the other liquor license renewals for the, the year of 2024. Staff was then notified in January 8th of an early termination document that was signed by both Vaha Properties and the, the building owner of Marcos. The term that was used within the license that was provided to the city was noted as a transfer of liquor license, no specifics in terms of who specifically to be, it to be transferred to. On February 6th recently, city council, you approved the liquor license transfer from Vaha Properties to the current owners of the property, which is Armio's Family LLC. Following that approval, after you took action on that night, city staff was notified by Vaha Properties that following approval of this license, that the license should only have been transferred to Marcos specifically. Staff was not aware of that, obviously the specifics of that, as you can see, and I'll show you that here shortly, that what was provided to us was just a transfer liquor license, no specifics as to who. And then it's now, current day, Armio's Family LLC has now opened the establishment at Tops, at Tops, they are now serving food and non-alcoholic beverages to date, as you may be aware. And they do have active insurance on the property as, as of February 28th, 2024, we have a current copy of that liquor on hand. And then in addition, we also wanna note that they did, we have documentation that Armio's Family has signed a five-year lease for this establishment on Dodd Boulevard. Here's something as well, just the summary of the signed documents. Typically at a staff level, this is not something that we review these agreements. Usually it's a pretty standard transfer, it's previous owners looking to transfer to a new owner and we usually don't have to get into this level. But basically, I just wanted to point out that this agreement here is signed by both Vaha Properties and the building owner. And as you can note on the document, which would be to your left, that there is just a noted there saying transfer of liquor license and nothing specific at that point. And then on the second document on the right-hand side, it just says that they look to terminate their lease agreement as of February 15th, 2024. So just additional information that it was beneficial before you take action here tonight, I do wanna note that the Armio's Family LLC does have interest in the current liquor license. So if the city were to transfer the license without Vaha Properties' consent, then the city would be open to liability claiming that Vaha Property was revoked without due process and outside of the conditions and requirements for the license provided by city code. If they meet, so if Vaha Properties meet all the license requirements, they're entitled to all the protections of a normal license. The other thing that I do wanna note as well is at a city level, we do approve liquor license, but after we approve or city council approves license, the state also has to approve the liquor license as well. And I do wanna note that state alcohol rules refers to a transfer of a liquor license, so when a liquor license business is sold or transferred, the former licensee would surrender their license as they no longer have a business venue to house their license, like there's no establishment for them. So as I noted, we have the request to open up a public hearing here tonight. We can address any questions that may come before us. And then of course, we have the recommended action as well. And I do wanna note that the recommended action for tonight is specifically the lapse of the financial responsibility is the reason for the suspension of the license, as well as the reason the council is considering the revoking of the liquor license.
Open up the floor, any questions for Ms. Fosbender? Hey, everybody's thinking through this. All right, with that, we will open up the floor for public hearing. Consider the floor open, anyone wishing to speak on this may do so, state your name and address and your question or concern.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. James Carlson, attorney for Vaha Properties here, also happen to be a Rosemount resident. That's not what I'm here for, though. There's been a lot of information, I guess, that's kind of been floating around with regards to the new Tops Tavern. Just so you're aware, my clients purchased the, the property or purchased the business back in 2019. They do currently have the liquor license. In fairness, they did pay for the liquor license and they paid for the liquor license from January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. Despite what has been provided here, and I certainly am not, Ms. Fosbender, if I mispronounced your name, I very, I apologize. Despite what's been provided by Ms. Fosbender, there is a litany of legal documents that exist at this point that we're likely getting into litigation here. When the property was essentially, for lack of a better term, turned over to the owners again, there was actually a contract, a signed contract, in which case the only person that was to end up getting the liquor license was in fact the owner. There's also some non-compete information, there's a whole litany of little litigation stuff that has legal language that really is gonna be irrelevant for you guys. The fact of the matter is that my clients paid for 12 months of a contract, 12 months of a liquor license and in the very worst case scenario, they're essentially stating that there is some financial responsibility that has not been met and that's why the license should not be or should be immediately terminated. Fact of the matter is that there is absolutely zero liability that my clients have. They haven't had any liability whatsoever with regards to that liquor license since February 15th, when they left that facility. So there is zero liability that's essentially open to either the owner of the property, Marcos, and/or the Armio's family that is now running the restaurant, or my client. Literally, my client is not serving any alcoholic beverages, so the financial responsibility portion of it is, there is none. If they were serving something, there'd be a concern. I understand that the city has somewhat of an interest with regards to the business that's being run there right now. But again, with all due respect, that's not something that the city should be jumping in. The city certainly shouldn't be jumping in and saying, we're gonna transfer the liquor license to somebody else because one party, who is not a party to the contract at all, this isn't Marcos that was essentially applying, as I understand it, and it wasn't Vaha Properties that was applying for it. I believe Marcos came in and tried to insinuate that he was somehow going to be getting the liquor license transferred to him. That's not my understanding at all. The agreement, which I have a signed copy of, calls for Mr. Marcos and his wife to be the individuals that secure the liquor license again, and that's only based upon the other terms and conditions, their conditions precedent. And so at this point, they are not disjunctive, they are conjunctive. Vaha Properties essentially was to end up getting something and in return would turn around and sell and/or transfer their liquor license. The conditions precedent did not occur and as such, they're not voluntarily essentially giving up their license or transferring that. I think that if the council decides that they're going to somehow allow for Armio's to end up having the liquor license, then there needs to be essentially a pro rata return of the $3,100 that my clients paid for the license for the year 2024. That ends up equating out to $1,808, albeit my clients are not interested in and do not voluntarily surrender, transfer and/or give up the liquor license at this point. They're asking that you not approve any transfer so that we can in fact get this matter resolved with a legal basis and we can have the transfer done effectively with all of the parties agreeing to what was supposed to have happened. I will certainly end up answering any questions that you guys have, but I, and I should also note, my clients are a Van Rowlini and then a Jackie Lannan, hence the Vaha VA in the J-A. That's where it comes from with regards to the Vaha Properties LLCs. Any questions, I certainly will answer them, but my clients are looking for you not to adopt the resolution and specifically state, no, it's theirs until December 24th or until there is an agreement between the parties and we come back and jointly request that that liquor license be transferred. Any questions, I certainly will answer.
I think it was brought to our attention that there was some conditions of the liquor license not, how am I saying it, there was some insurance or something that had elapsed? Is that my understanding?
Yeah, what, what happens is it, it essentially states that they have to maintain liability insurance or proof of financial responsibility. So again, those are two separate things. The reality of it is, the proof of financial responsibility comes with the idea that they're not serving liquor. They don't have, they're not in the business, so they're not at that location, they don't have another location that they're sitting, you know, sitting out on the sidewalks and selling liquor to. They paid for something through December 31st, they're entitled to it. If they did something financially irresponsible, they turned around, they were essentially, let's say, selling and/or giving away liquor, that would be a different situation. I can tell you, I personally have had discussions with the attorney for Marcos to make very certain that there is not to be any liquor that is being either sold, given away and/or dispensed at the facility that's now still called Tops Tavern. And I've been assured that there has not been. That's the owner of the business and he does in fact have liability insurance on that building.
I'd open it up, questions?
I'm gonna direct these questions to Ms. Fosbender here. With the, with existing liquor license in the name of Vaha Properties, is that correct?
Correct.
What, what location do they have? I mean, in order to have a liquor license, don't you have to have a location where you're gonna be serving that liquor?
Yep, so the liquor license that they, that city council had approved was 14533 Dodd Boulevard, which is currently occupied by the new owners, if you want to say.
And right now, they, they have no right to use that property? They don't have any lease agreement, they don't have any, there's no opportunity?
Armio's Family, are you saying? Am I right? Vaha Properties, correct, yep.
Vaha Properties, so, so even though they've got the liquor license, they have no facility to actually use it?
In addition to that, too, through this, the state who occupies or houses the, the final of the liquor license, it will show that it is expired on the state site because they do not have proof of insurance. That's a big piece, when you apply for liquor license, that you have to have that certificate of insurance.
And the proof of insurance has to be for the property where the liquor is being distributed?
Correct.
But they have no claim to that location anymore because they're no longer in the lease, so there's no, I mean, they, they have a license, but they have no, they have no facility to actually use it for, they can't prove insurance because they have no legal right to that use of property, use of that property?
Correct.
Okay, so that's for you. I guess my question for you is, what, what's, what's Vaha Properties motivation to retain the license? What, what's, what's the drive to retain the license?
So Vaha Properties still actually maintains a interest in that property as we sit today.
And what's that interest?
They still, their rent, dependent upon how you read their lease agreement, in the worst case scenario, they have it through May 31st, 2024. So they do have a, a interest in it, the reality of it is they went to sell their business, there was tortious interference from Marcos, the individual that owns the building. Actually, my clients had, just so you understand, my clients had a signed contract that was gonna be purchased, the business was gonna be purchased from my clients, my clients have a signed contract. Marcos essentially exsayed that.
But, but, but when you say the business was for sale, the, the name Tops or that, or that physical location?
The, the name and the location.
There was a location for the, uh, real estate to buy the building?
Not to buy the building, because Marcos owns the building.
Right.
Let me make it a little clearer.
So what was the, what was the, what, what business were they purchasing?
My clients essentially were selling Tops.
Okay, the name?
And the lease, yes, the, the lease that they had, because my clients had a right to renew their lease, so they had an interest.
Did they renew the lease?
They did not because of Marcos. Marcos essentially.
Okay, but there's no, so right now, the existing lease agreement goes through when?
May 31st, 2024.
So you're, Vaha Properties still has, has, has the ability to lease the property by terms of the agreement through May 31st?
That is our argument, yes, absolutely. And actually, we say for the next five years.
So for right now, what is, what, what, let's see, the new, the new?
Armio's, I think is how.
Okay, what, but they're currently in that space, how, how, how does one party have an agreement to lease the space, but you have a different party that's actually occupying the space? How, how does that work? Do they not also have a lease agreement? Is there?
I don't know.
Two parallel lease agreements?
We have no idea what they did with Marcos. What you need to understand is that my clients had the right to, to secure the place through the end of May 2024 and then had the right to re-up for another five years. That's part of their lease agreement. That's part of their lease agreement.
Okay, but my, my question is, who has the legal right to lease that property as of right now in the month of May of two thousand twenty-four?
Well, I know that my clients have a right to whether or not the Armios have it or not, I don't know, because I'm not part of their.
Have they procured it? I mean, have they, I mean, do they legally have the right to use the property?
You're asking me a question that I don't know, I don't represent the owners of that facility, I don't know what their contract.
No, but do you believe, as the representative for Vaha Properties, do you believe that your client has the right to use that property right now?
Yes.
In the month of May?
Yes.
So there's been no termination of a lease?
Well, that's where, if I may, we have received a document, part of our liquor license transfer was that the liquor license was, an amendment was passed through the agreement that it was terminated February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
So the, you've got something that says the lease agreement with Vaha was terminated on February fifteenth?
And that was part of the, the slideshow.
Did you dispute that?
I do, yes.
You dispute that there was a signed lease agreement, that, that, that there was a signed agreement to terminate the lease as of February fifteenth?
Yeah, I, I, yes, I do. I mean, the short answer is yes, but again, there is a litany of essentially legal discussions that are going on behind the scenes and litigation that's going to begin, as far as even today.
Okay, so, so Ms. Fosbender, do, are you, are you in, you, you've got a document that shows that the lease was terminated as of February fifteenth?
Correct.
And is there any, Benny, have you provided any evidence to, to, to provide any evidence to show that that's not valid and enforceable?
That the?
That the termination of the lease is not terminated?
No, we, we dispute that it's valid, absolutely, we dispute that that's valid.
Did you sign it? Did your client sign it?
I didn't sign anything.
The document that we have signed from February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four was signed by Vaha Properties and the owner of the building, Marcos.
So the agreement, Vaha has signed the agreement that says the lease is terminated as of February fifteenth? Do you dispute that?
I, I dispute that there was a valid termination of the lease on February fifteen, two thousand twenty-four.
They signed it?
Absolutely.
Even though your client signed it?
Yes, I wholeheartedly, yes, absolutely.
I'm not, on what basis? On what basis? Like, I, I don't understand. I mean, if, if we have a document that says they signed it and said, "We're terminating the lease as of February fifteenth," what, what basis do we have as a council to know there's something wrong with that? Is there's a subsequent document that said, "Oops, we didn't mean to sign that"? I mean, what, 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 what's the defense for that, 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 that the lease isn't terminated?
Because I, I tried to explain earlier, saying that the owner of the business essentially has a contract with my clients from two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-four. My clients, as part of their contract, had an agreement to say, "Okay, we can end up assigning this lease, we can end up selling our business." So my client approached under the contract, that's what I'm saying, that's all stuff that, it makes it difficult to end up going through everything with you guys, but as part of the contract, he can't just essentially deny my clients the right to assign.
But didn't, I'm, I'm just where I'm, I'm perplexed here, because didn't they sign it away when they signed the termination of the lease?
After being tortuously interfered with, yes.
And what?
Again, if, if you'll let me finish what I started, there is a signed agreement that my clients have, an offer to purchase from the people that are in the location right now, okay? So after essentially, my client has that signed agreement, provides that to the owner, Marcos. Marcos then turned around and ex-nayed that, saying, "Nope, I'm not going to allow for this to turn around and happen." My clients then were approached by Marcos to say, "If you want to leave early, I'm going to allow you to leave early, you have to sign this termination agreement, and oh, by the way, I didn't tell you, I've already secured a lease agreement with the Armios now, which is in direct contradiction to the contract that you have." So hence the term tortious interference. Marcos has tortiously interfered with their ability to run Tops Tavern, pursue it to their contract.
When's the effective date of the new lease with the new occupants of the facility?
I don't know, I have no idea.
Um, I don't have the exact date, but I have been notified that it is active as now, and it is a five-year lease that they have signed.
And it, when was it dated? Do you know when it was effective? Was it post-Fbruary fifteenth?
Yep, yep.
It was after fif-
They took over the building March first, if you may recall, we had discussed the support authority, that they had a soft opening, open house and so forth, so they had a soft opening starting March first, so I can only suspect that the lease agreement was officially February twenty-eighth.
Okay, so just, I know there's a lot, lot of open questions here still, but just to make sure I'm clear so far, so what you have in your possession, and nothing has been countered to this, is February fifteenth, there's a signed agreement that says, the original occupants, Vaha Properties has now, they've terminated their lease, they've signed something, they've agreed to terminate their lease.
Correct.
Subsequently, the owner of the building entered into a new lease, which is effective March one, and now they're occupying it. Vaha Properties, are they just, are they doing anything to, to, um, make it, make it, make a dispute that they shouldn't even be occupying that facility?
Yes, as of today, like I was saying, even today, I was in contact, his attorney's name, Marcos' attorney's name is Stephen Carlson. I've been in communication with him on, at a minimum, a daily basis for the last week, but several months that we've been going back and forth. So yes, they are, in fact, taking steps to actually say, "No, no, you are not essentially properly in the business location."
And, and what, what, what's?
They need to figure this out.
Yeah. I mean, what, what, what's, what's in your possession that you can share with us that puts them in a position where they haven't legitimately released the lease as of February fifteenth? That's, that's the part I'm missing.
I don't, there's no way to prove a negative, sir, no. The, the reality of it is, what we do know is that my clients paid for, they paid for the liquor license from January first, two thousand twenty-four, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Yep, and I, I get that, and I'll, I would suggest we set that aside, that's a different issue, but the issue we're trying to solve for is, do they have a legal right to that property after February fifteenth? And what I, we, if we don't have anything to counter, that they're out as of February fifteenth, based on the fact that they've signed a document that says, "We're out as of February fifteenth"?
There, there is nothing to show that that document was properly executed, there's nothing to show that. You have a document signed by-
Do they dispute that they signed it?
I didn't dispute that they signed it, I dispute that it is a proper document. You asked me whether or not my clients had a basis, a legal basis, to be in that, I would say residence, but in that location, and my argument is, yes, absolutely, absolutely. There was an agreement whereby the liquor license was to be transferred to Marcos, and Marcos only. And so that's the part where you guys, you, you're essentially taking the, the word of somebody who sends you one page of a signed document, apparently, I don't know, I haven't seen everything else. I cannot testify, or I can't even ask you or answer any questions about Armios, because I haven't seen their contract yet. We literally are just starting litigation, so now we have to do the discovery process where we will get a copy of the lease agreement. By the sounds of it, the city's already been providing the copy, we haven't. That's why I'm saying, I'm not trying to be difficult, I can't tell you whether or not Armios has a, a five-year lease.
So in the meantime, in the meantime, we're sitting here with a, and I'm still struggling to understand what the motivation is for you not wanting to have this, I mean, my understanding is, your clients have moved out of town, out of the, out of state?
No, that's not correct, and, and that wasn't mentioned, that wasn't even mentioned here, you're the individual that just said they moved out of state, they haven't.
So they're living here locally?
Yes.
What, what, what was the reason they signed the agreement to be out as of February fifteenth? Why did they sign it?
Because they were being forced out by somebody who was tortiously interfering with them and, and their ability to operate the business. They had a death in the family, and they had a significant injury or a significant health issue with another individual. We are so off-base as to what we should be discussing right now, it concerns me that you actually advised and said that they moved out of the state. That didn't happen. That flat-out didn't happen. That wasn't brought up at this hearing here, that wasn't in any of the written documents.
Regardless, to me, I don't understand, I, I don't understand what the relevance-
Continue to cut me off, I haven't done that to you. My claim is, my clients purchased a liquor license, they flat-out have paid for that liquor license, you're being asked to essentially vacate that.
And, and the reason we're, we're, the reason staff is, is recommending it is because, number one, there's no physical property, based on the documentation we have, and we haven't seen any document to counter it, there's no physical location where that liquor license can be used, so that's telling us that, well, then we should revoke it.
There, there is no law that says that it has to be used at that location, I'll give you a prime example, on leprechaun days, Kelz goes down and ends up serving when they're in the park.
And we approve that.
You're absolutely correct, but you're not approving it at the sale of, at their liquor location, that's on their license.
No, we approve it, if, if they're going to be downtown for leprechaun days, we approve that that location, we, we go through that process and we approve that.
There are exceptions to what's happening, which is exactly what I'm trying to explain to you. My clients owned a business, turned around, and essentially have the right to sell that business, they were tortously interfered with, and the use of that by you, by this council saying, "Hey, we're going to revoke their liquor license, and now we're going to give it to somebody else." Essentially, that is perpetuating the idea of what Marcos has done with regards to tortiously interfering with my client's ability to run the business and to sell it.
Mayor, Mayor, if I could jump in just real quickly, I, I think this has been, you know, we're, we're many fields away from the city's purview here tonight. The reality, Mayor and Council, is we have a recommendation from our city attorney that there is a failure to retain liability insurance, period. So the, the conversations, it sounds like you have a very meaty case on your hands, and you're going to go ahead and handle that, and that's between you and these three parties, we are deeply disconnected from your three-way entanglement with these folks, and, and that's, that's the situation. For us tonight, is you have a city attorney recommending that the, the, the lack of liability insurance being retained is the city's signal to revoke the liquor license. I, I can say, as a staff leader of, we'd be happy to give you the refund, we can process that tomorrow, take care of that, you folks can work through your legal situation, but what staff is recommending, what our city attorney is recommending, is they failed to retain liability insurance, for whatever reason, it's not what we're talking about tonight. A secondary piece, they don't have a physical property to operate out of, I think that's important, but not, not a deal-breaker, right? So we're recommending, as a city staff, that I think we should leave this conversation here. If council wants to punt, give these folks a chance to talk to staff and keep, we can do that, or staff is recommending via our city attorney that you can go out and take the action tonight to revoke the liquor license because of the financial, the lack of financial liability retained in connection to this license.
So my question is, is there any evidence, I guess, that says that what we're claiming is true or not? That there's a lapse of insurance, correct? Insurance lapse?
Yep, that would be correct, so speaking-
Yeah, so did an insurance lapse occur or not?
The insurance lapse occurred, but the reason for that, again-
No, no, did it occur or did it not?
They don't need to have the liability insurance, they need to have financial-
Well, my, my clerk says we do.
And, and that's fine, my issues, they need to find-
A question for, for Aaron, is there precedent of, in, in town, of a business, or someone holding on to a liquor license without a business in which to operate it? Is there any precedent of that that we're aware of?
Shenanigans.
Yeah, shenanigans.
That was, yeah, that was several years ago where that had occurred, and then we had made a liquor license amendment for that to not occur.
Okay.
And we took a specific action on that to allow them to do that.
Correct. And then regarding this, then, though, with a lapse of the insurance, I mean, would the state also then be stepping forward and the state would revoke it anyway?
The state already has, so.
The state already has.
The state already has, so there's no buyer's card or anything, so Vaha Properties would not be, have the ability to purchase any sort of liquor.
Okay.
So I just want to end up pointing out that the document that you provided, very clearly the top-left-hand side, it says, "Dear Van, to summarize previous correspondence, this is simply a one-page summary of the extremely lengthy legal documents that we've got that we will end up challenging. I have essentially made my pitch, certainly you guys are going to end up doing what you want to do, I will stand by and we'll go from there."
So I do have a question, though, okay, so if we, if we were to move ahead and approve the revocation of the list license, and if something would happen down the road with the, the three parties trying to resolve their issues, if we get to a point where they come back and say, "No, we actually did have legal, in, we were legally entitled to that property, we're legal, legally entitled to have this liquor license," what, what would happen then? What would be the process?
Similar to what we're doing right now, so if Armios does look to come forward and have interest in the property, if they apply for liquor license, their liquor license would only be, say, if they applied this year, it would only be good through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay.
Every, at the end of each year, City Council has the ability to approve the liquor license for the following year, or one year, sure.
But what would we do with that liquor license if these three parties go through their legal, legal resolution, and they come back and say, "Actually, Vaha Properties was entitled to the property, they are entitled to use that liquor license," would we then have to revoke the new liquor license?
Unfortunately, it would probably be a very similar process as to what we're doing here right now.
Okay, so there is a remedy, so, I mean, to your, for, for the benefit of your client, if you guys were, I mean, if we revoke it tonight, and then you go through the remedy, because right now, my understanding is, you're not trying to use the liquor license right now, actively use it, but if the path comes down and it's settled out where you guys are entitled to use that liquor license, we'll have to address it at that time. But I think what we're hearing right now is, as of today, the facts we know, we're in a position, our attorney, city attorney is recommending that we should revoke the license for the reasons that, that, that they've laid out for us.
I can't give you legal advice, all I can do is tell you I'm here on behalf of my clients.
Okay.
And Jackie.
Yep, okay, that's fair.
All righty.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? The floor is still open for the public hearing, anyone else wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing no one, moving to the podium, I'll move to close the public hearing. Your second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed. Public hearing is closed. Discussion for council, recommended action is there. Where are we talking? Thoughts? Anyone?
I mean, do we give them two weeks to figure this out?
Yeah, I don't really feel comfortable acting on it.
I don't feel comfortable acting on it, and I think one of the things that he said that we don't have the details on is, the reason why they didn't transfer the license is because the, the, the building owner didn't meet the preceding-
Conditions.
Conditions, which we don't have all that detail, and we don't need all that detail, but I think this is kind of messy, and I, I'd rather them go figure it out, and then we can, we can be, that's just my opinion.
Well, I'm, I'm prepared, I'm, I'm a, I'm prepared to, to make a recommendation to approve the resolution revoking it, I'm prepared to do that, and I think the reason I'm comfortable doing it is, again, I think the remedy is, if it gets solved, and for some reason they settle out, that, if the new owners come in and ask for liquor license, and we approve that, and ultimately, they in turn, just like what we're, what we're, what I'm believing and understanding is that they currently don't have, the, Vaha Properties doesn't currently have the right to leverage that, if, if that happens, we can make the, we can, we can make that, we can, we can do that, make, make that correction after the fact, but for right now, I think based on the attorney's recommendation, I, I will make an motion to approve the attached resolution revoking non-sale liquor license for Vaha Properties.
Is there a second? Is there a second? All right, I'll give it a second so that we can further discuss it. So the motion's on the table, further discussion. Comments?
My, my comment is, I'm not sure what the downside is.
Yeah.
If, if we know, if we know that there's a remedy for Vaha Properties in the future, if they settle up and they are proven to, that the point that their attorney has made, then, then there's a remedy to fix it. So this isn't a botched heart surgery that can't be fixed, there's, there's a remedy to, to, to change this.
Yeah, my, my take on it is, it's, rather than relying on another messy remedy in the future, let's try to get the messy, messy remedy done now. I mean, we're talking tortious interference and litigation, and it feels like, just looking at what we have in front of us, is maybe even the city wasn't provided a full picture, or that's what the implication kind of was, and so I don't feel comfortable doing a vote when I'm thinking here that maybe we don't actually have the full picture, and I trust our city attorney and, and the guidance of, that we received there, I just don't necessarily, you know, feel confident that we had the full picture that she could even give guidance on, or, that's kind of how I'm feeling based on this, so.
Based-
I think it gets messier, actually, if we revoke it tonight. I feel like going a little status quo and punting and giving a little time for maybe
some arbitration or mediation to work itself out. Um, and if that, if that's an option that can kinda happen, and hopefully sooner than later, I'd rather do that than throw this additional wrench in things.
I, I don't believe this is gonna be resolved in two weeks. I mean, based on what I heard tonight, this is not a two-week resolution, this is gonna be months, um, and we're gonna be, we, we're not just kicking the can down for two weeks here, guys, we're, this is gonna be, we're, we're in for the long haul. And you've got a business owner sitting in the property that has what they believe is legal entitlement to that property, and they can't serve alcohol.
But we don't know their side of the story either. I, I agree with Tammy, I think we need to, we just need to let them figure it out, maybe we give them 30 days, I, I, what, what have you, and they can come back and we can go from there. And then I would not have a problem following our attorney's advice, but there's just too much here, and I don't think we have the full story.
Well, and I would even go a little further to say that, I think we should talk to the city attorney after hearing what we heard tonight as well, and just, maybe just, I think you said the word punt, punted, maybe we punted to a different meeting or something, but I'm not comfortable voting on it tonight as well.
I am curious, um, with the state taking their action, feels like all the, uh, i's and d, you know, i's being dotted and t's being crossed, and they're, they've actually gone ahead and taken action ahead of us. So I am curious as to, is that how that normally works, or?
Um, it's usually a timely thing, um, it, it can vary. So especially with certificates of insurance, if they don't have an act of certificate of insurance, it's an immediate, your license is pulled right then and there, and you're notified, uh, that you don't, no longer have a buyer's card, which is necessary in order to purchase liquor.
I understand, there hasn't been any certificate provided to us this evening, you know, we've had the public hearing, that information hasn't been provided to us. So I'm, I'm kind of at a loss why we wouldn't necessarily wanna move forward. Our action is, is about, you know, the revocation of that license due to the, you know, that not being in place. That's the action.
And again, there's a remedy. The remedy is, if they're entitled to it, they get it, and they get it back. So what's the harm?
All right. We're all talked out, there's a motion on the floor to move the recommended action. We'll take roll.
Tyson?
Nay.
Fresky?
Nay.
Essler?
Aye.
Klimpul?
Nay.
Wysensel?
Aye. Motion fails. Two, three. Three, two? Three, two. Uh, with that then, I will, uh, make a motion to defer back to staff, or refer back to staff for, uh, follow, follow-up, and to present more additional information for us to make an action. Uh, so a motion by Wysensel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Klimpul. Roll, please.
Fresky?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Klimpul?
Aye.
Wysensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
And that motion carries five zero. That completes our public hearings for this evening. Uh, item seven B will move past item eight, unfinished business, and move on to nine, new business, item A, Dunmore Park, general improvement bids. Mr. Schultz.
All right, Mr. Mayor, uh, council members, uh, this evening before you is a request to accept bids and award a contract for the general park improvements at the Dunmore Park, which is, uh, located just north of the Rosemount Community Center on the west side of Highway three. Uh, the park is a fi- a point five-nine acres of land that has been dedicated to the city. Um, it's, it's a very small neighborhood park, and we'll talk about that in a little bit when we talk about playgrounds. But, um, the, uh, anticipated, uh, amenities that we are planning out there include a playground, landscaping, hammock posts, and sidewalks. Um, there'll also be a future regional greenway that runs through that area, that is not part of this improvement project, nor is the, uh, future sun shelter or playground, that is also shown in the, uh, in the packet. And so, we did put this out to public bid, uh, we did receive, I think we had, uh, one, two, three, four, five, eleven, ten, ten bids, one that we did not, uh, include because they did not include all their bidding documents, which was just a masonry company. So, um, the low bid was VEDA, uh, Contracting, their bid was for $125,000. The, uh, engineer's estimate for the project was $156,000. So staff is recommending that the city council, uh, accept the bids, uh, and award the project to the lowest bidder, VEDA Contracting, for $125,000. If this, um, goes through tonight and is approved, we will, uh, set up a meeting next week with the contractor and get them started, um, and move forward on it. And I'll stand for questions, if there are any.
Open to council, any questions? All righty. Uh, would anyone like to move the recommended action?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to recommend the city council accept the bids for Dunmore Park and award the project to the lowest bidder, VADA Contracting, for a bid price of $125,000.
I'll second.
And a motion by Tyson, second by Fresky. Roll, please.
Fresky?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Klimpul?
Aye.
Wysensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
And nine A, pleaded five zero and approved. Move to the second item, nine B, the playground proposals for Camfield, Talomore, and Dunmore.
All right, Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you. Um, tonight before you are a number of playground proposals for three, uh, parks in Rosemount. Uh, the first one is Camfield Park, which is over by the Well Church off Canada Avenue. Uh, the other is Talomore, uh, Park, which is another new park, and then the other, uh, proposal is for Dunmore Park, which again is, is another new park we're building right now. Um, so our long-term capital improvement plan, uh, includes funding for the Camfield Park equipment, and then the city's capital improvement budget plan includes funding for the new playgrounds, um, at Talomore and Dunmore. Um, the existing equipment out at Camfield was installed back in 1999, is proposed to be removed, uh, should we go forward with buying new playground equipment. Uh, we did put out RFPs to playground manufacturers, uh, the budgets for each of the playgrounds is listed below. Uh, please take note that the Dunmore, uh, playground is quite a bit less just because that space is that much smaller, uh, it's a small neighborhood park, and that's the reason for that. Uh, we did hold in-person neighborhood meetings, uh, for each of the different, uh, park locations. We also had an online opportunity for residents to go online and vote and make comments about the playground proposals through our Park and Recreation, uh, website. And then we also brought these proposals forward to the Park and Rec Commission on April 22nd, and the Youth Commission on April 24th. Um, I will tell you that we had an overwhelming amount of input from the Camfield Park, uh, website and also the neighborhood meeting, um, that's because we had interaction with, um, Crystal, uh, Cuddle Bugs Daycare, which is just adjacent to the park and the shopping mall near Camfield Park, and then also the Well has a preschool program. Um, so I know the teachers from the preschool program came to the open house, as did two representatives from Crystal's Cuddle Bugs. So I know once, um, once they got the information about our website, they were sending it out to all of their, all of their, uh, little ones that come to their, to their daycares or their preschools, and we had over a hundred people respond online about the, the Camfield playground. And so, um, so it's good to have a lot of input, I think we end up with better products. And, and with that being said, um, in the packet, the recommendation, uh, for the playground equipment is for Camfield, uh, we are looking at buying the equipment, which would be, um, design number one from, uh, Northland Recreation. Uh, we wouldn't, uh, use the tans and browns and greens that are shown in the, in the layout, we would actually use more bright vibrant colors, kinda like what they show, uh, for the Talomore Parks, those a little bit more, you know, lively. Um, so that's the first recommendation, is the, the Northland Recreation for Camfield. The second recre- uh, recommendation is for Talomore Park, and that was option number two, uh, for, uh, from Burke Recreation. Again, just some really vibrant colors, fun, uh, play equipment, and, uh, that was a kind of an overwhelming message we got from everybody involved. And then the final one for Dunmore, uh, is option number, let me just pull it up here, option number, it's actually op- uh, option number two. Yes, option number two is what, uh, the residents in that neighborhood liked, they definitely wanted swings, um, um, and then they also liked the, the sun shade that's over the equipment. And so those are the three recommendations that, um, as a whole, we're bringing forward tonight. Um, should we go ahead and purchase this equipment? The Camfield equipment will definitely be installed as late in the fall as we can get it, just so we don't have to interfere with, um, the, the daycare and the neighbors and the, the preschool getting there and using that play, or not having the playground equipment. And then the other two will be installed as soon as the playground areas are ready with the new construction that we're currently working on in Talomore and Dunmore. So with that, I can definitely answer questions if there are any.
If there's open to council for questions, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, which, which Dunmore, one, option one or option two?
Um, the recommendation in the packet for Dunmore is Weber Recreation, option two.
Is that the one called two A?
Which is the one that's blue and green.
Two A in the packet?
Yeah, two A, I'm sorry, yeah, two A.
Okay, thanks, sorry.
Yep.
Cause the, the, the option one seemed a little, it's like, I've never seen some of that stuff before, so option two, yeah, okay, thanks.
I have a couple of questions, Dan.
Yes.
Talomore Park, that's gonna be the first real park with playground equipment over in Amber Fields, am I looking at this first?
Nope, uh-
Or where, it's Talomore?
Talomore Park is, uh, in the development. If you, uh, where we were today at, uh, Lifetime, rather than turning into Lifetime, taking that right off of, uh, Conimera, you go all the way to where Conimera ends, and it's just to the north.
Okay.
So it's kinda, it's kinda, uh, slid in between, uh, some single-family homes and a large grouping of townhomes, and so it, it is, uh, it is the, uh, uh, north and east of, uh, Lifetime.
So I do have a question for you.
Yep.
We invest a lot of money in our parks and we're really proud of that. How do you guys, as a department, um, count or quantify visitors to our parks? Like, how do you know how much usage we're getting out of them?
It's challenging. Um, a lot of it is just done by, you know, when we're out and about and driving by, like, tonight when we, a lot of us drove back on Conimera, and you saw at, um-
Hillsbury.
Hillsbury Park, thank you. There was a baseball group using it, there was people on the basketball court, there was people on, um, the, uh, you know, the, the open space and then at the playground.
Yeah.
Uh, but I have been meeting with, uh, a company that actually, it doesn't work as much for young kids, it's more about families and special events, but they ping cell phones, um, and they can tell you more like, how many people visited J.C. Park on a Thursday night, or how many people came to Leprechaun Days, or how many people came to the Food Truck Fest. And we do have some numbers from them, and they do work with commercial businesses to, to, to match the pings, and they have a, you know, a mathematical equation that they use to extrapolate out getting to the number, and those numbers come in very close to what the store counters.
Mm-hmm.
The little, and when you walk in, they count every person who comes in the store, the two numbers are very close, and so that's something we, we've been talking with them about, we haven't done anything yet, cause it's a little bit expensive.
Yeah.
But there's not a real good way unless you send someone out there every day and do kind of a head count, but-
Okay.
I just know, like, the neighborhood I live in, by Birch Park, it's, I can just go down my patio and I can just hear-
Yeah.
The, the noise coming from the playground, and that usually tells us it's, it's quite busy, so-
Noise or just laughter?
Noise and laughter.
All right, any other questions? All right, uh, does anyone like to move the recommended action?
I'll make a motion to purchase a playground equipment for Camfield Park from Northwood, Northland Recreation, Little Tykes, Talomore Park, option two, from San Croy Recreation, Burke, and for Dunmore Park, option two, Weber Recreation Miracle.
I'll second.
We'll give, uh, motion to Fresky, second to Tyson. Roll, please.
Essler?
Aye.
Klimpul?
Aye.
Wysensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Fresky?
Aye.
Uh, that completes item nine B with the comment, it's nice to see you, uh, we were able to spread out the, uh, the companies that are providing that and get a little diversity in, uh, what's being provided, so it's nice seeing that, too. All right, that completes item nine, new business, we'll move on to ten announcements. Mr. Martin, city staff updates.